Good morning, and welcome back to the February 15th meeting of the Orange County Planning and Zoning Commission. Let's move on with our next case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be presenting this next case. This is a regular cycle amendment. It is transmittal, and the case number is 2023-3A11. And I apologize, my clicker is not working. Can you go to the next slide? This is the process for the amendment. We did have a community meeting on September 6th. There are going to be two transmittal public hearings. This is the first of the two. We do have an anticipated tentative date of March 26th for the Board of County Commissioners. It will be transmitted to the state if approved, and it will come back for two adoption public hearings. Next slide, please. So this case is a request to change or to select a future land use map designation of village and include it within Horizon West. It would be an expansion of the Village H special planning area. The property measures 114.23 gross acres and 75.20 upland acres. There are 39.04 wetland acres on the subject property. The request is to go to have a development program up to 1,410 multifamily dwelling units. These are intended currently as a mixed income community with over 1,000 of the units, meeting the county's definition of affordable housing. Next slide, please. And this is located in District 1. Next slide, please. This is an aerial of the subject property, showing it on the east side of Avalon Road, and west and south of Hertzog Road. And, next slide, please. This is the current future land use map. The next slide shows the proposed future land use designation of village for the subject property. And the next slide shows the Horizon West special planning area map, and this is across the street from the Village Center District. And you'll see on this map also the apartment districts, and the subject property is proposed for apartment district and wetlands. And this is consistent, this designation is consistent with the policy 4.1.1, which does pretty much state that increased density should be located in and around the Village Center District. Next slide, please. And zoning currently has no designation. It would be PD if this gets transmitted. It will come back for adoption, and you would at that time see the land use plan concurrently with adoption of the village request. Next slide, please. And again, this is an aerial of the subject property. 2,681 notices were sent to an area extending beyond 1,500 feet from the subject parcel. To date, we have received 104 responses in opposition and 17 responses in support, including the Orlando Economic Partnership, West Orange Chamber of Commerce, and the Central Florida Hotel and Lodging Association. Those in opposition stated concerns of traffic, school overcrowding, overdevelopment of apartments in the area, impacts to infrastructure and services, pedestrian safety, lack of public transportation, and environmental impacts. A community meeting was held on September 6th with 70 residents and attendants who were mostly opposed to the request. There were some of the residents in support of the request. Those in opposition stated concerns of overdevelopment of apartments in the area, traffic, and school overcrowding. Those in support of the request are in support of attainable housing in the area. And the next slide shows the request from staff, which is to transmit this amendment and to find it in compliance and consistent with the comprehensive plan. And that completes my presentation.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant present?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Kathy Haddaway with Walt Disney Imagineering, representing the property owners. My address is PO Box 10321, Lake Buena Vista, Florida. We are in agreement with the staff report and would request your support to implement the staff's recommendation to recommend to the BCC that our application be transmitted to the state reviewing agencies. In furtherance of the staff's finding that the information in our application meets the requirements of Orange County and the Florida statutes for transmittal to the agencies, I'd like to submit into the record a letter that documents the analyses, studies, and data that were submitted with our application package. And now I'd like to introduce Tajiana Ancora Brown with Walt Disney World, who will share with you information about the affordable housing community that this future land use map amendment will make possible.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I am the External Affairs Director at Disney World, and my address is 1375 East Buena Vista Drive, Orlando. Community leaders have identified affordable housing as one of the biggest needs in our region, and our plan can contribute to the solution. We are working very thoughtfully alongside a prominent developer to create a place that strengthens the surrounding area while making a real difference in people's lives for years to come. Every day, we strive to be a force for good. Yeah, but it's not. I apologize.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I don't believe the clicker's working, so could we just, could we ask to go back to the beginning of the presentation slides, please?
Sure.
Good? All right.
I know. Yeah.
I'm gonna have some help. All right, thank you so much. So we're gonna go to the next slide. "Every day, we strive to be a force for good and provide hope and inspiration to people around the world. We have a legacy of investing in making Central Florida a great place because to us, it's home. But Central Florida, like so many other communities across the country, is facing a crisis, a shortage of affordable housing." I'm gonna need you to go back, yeah. Back one more. Thank you. We're gonna go to the third slide. Thank you so much. And as you can see here, the crisis is making headlines. This is a national issue, but we feel that, we feel its impact right here in Orange County. And this last headline shows how much a household has to earn to avoid being rent burdened. Some examples of who that includes are many professions beyond hospitality and entertainment, including early career professionals, as well as teachers, first responders, healthcare and healthcare professionals. Many are employed in full-time jobs, and as the headlines call out, are facing rent increases and other challenges that make living in our area unattainable. And this future development will be open to all qualifying residents, including Disney employees. And the next slide shows that Orange County Mayor Jerry Demmings launched the Housing For All Task Force in 2019, and Disney was an active participant. And we were inspired by the findings to take this action. Next slide. "To have a meaningful role in positively impacting this issue, Disney is dedicating this nearly 80 acres of land for the purposes of bringing more affordable housing to our community. We selected a nationally recognized affordable housing developer with experience in Florida, called the Michaels Organization, who you'll hear from in just a moment. The development will be unique in that it is not government-funded, and the Michaels Organization will not accept county assistance in the form of trust fund dollars or impact fee discounts or waivers. The Michaels Organization will build, own, and operate this development. Disney won't profit from it. And we plan to set forth a 75-year lease on the land to ensure affordable housing remains available to Orange County residents on this property for decades to come. Selecting this land will provide many benefits for residents who will call it home. It's part of a thriving community, close to significant employers, shopping, services, schools, and recreation. And we expect future residents of this community to work at and patronize many of the nearby businesses, like Horizon West Hospital, Publix at Waterly." And as I wrap up my part of the update, I just want to take a moment to share that I'm also a Horizon West resident, raising my family just minutes away from this future community. And I do take a lot of pride in being both a part of the Disney team, working on this effort, and being a resident who will welcome my future neighbors. And now I'm pleased to introduce Ned Williams with the Michaels Organization to talk about their plans for the development of this community.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Ned Williams with the Michaels Organization, 2 Cooper Street, Camden, New Jersey. Michaels was selected for this project based on our experience in leadership in developing and managing affordable and attainable properties that truly lift lives. Next slide, please. Michaels is the largest privately-held affordable housing developer in the nation and recently celebrated our 50th year. With almost 600 communities across the country and 74,000 units under management, we take, our team takes pride in finding what's important to each community, while providing the same exceptional service to each of our 200,000 residents across the country. Next slide, please. Our mission at Michaels is to bring comprehensive solutions to communities and to jumpstart housing education, civic engagement, and neighborhood prosperity. This community, like all of our Michaels communities, will be a launching pad for people to move to the next levels of their lives, to be ambassadors of the greater population. Our goal is to create an environment for inspiration, personal growth, well-being to the broader Horizon West and Orange County communities. Next slide, please. Beyond our nationwide experience, we are especially familiar with developing and maintaining affordable housing and attainable housing throughout the state of Florida. This is an affordable housing project called Janey's Garden and is located in Sarasota. It highlights the local designs and architecture that's so unique to the region. Next slide, please. Our vision for this community with Disney has three pillars. First, to lift the lives of those who contribute and support the local community each and every day. Second, to seamlessly integrate within the Horizon West community by complying with the county's development and guideline standards. And finally, to provide our residents with an inspirational setting that promotes the natural environment with their health, growth, and well-being and community members of Horizon West. With that, we'd like to introduce the property. Next slide, please. As you can see on the screen, our proposed plan has a strong central core with a diverse range of typologies, amenities, and open spaces. Now I'm gonna take you through the metrics of the community and present it more in fine detail. Next slide, please. Together with Disney, we have set several goals to ensure the vision of this community becomes a reality and stays resilient over time and maintains its affordability. First is to elevate the resident experience through personal growth, leasing, management, and operations. Next is to inspire our residents to share their story and become community ambassadors and engage in locally-driven programs, events that are available to them, and all Horizon West residents. And last and most important, to ensure that nature prevails and that health and wellness is an equitable experience that prevails throughout the community. Next slide, please. As you've heard, the site is 114 gross acres. Of that, just about 75 are developable, and will have net open spaces of around 20 acres. And will have up to 1,410 units and two amenity buildings within the community. Next slide, please. There are three points of entry, a north and south along Hertzog Road to the east, and one along Avalon Road to the west. We believe these points of entry and egress will balance the flow in and out of the property. Next slide, please. At the entries, we are providing distinct architectural placemaking to highlight the different built and natural surroundings and activities which will be present. Our space network provides unique outdoor settings and opportunities for residents, as well as the Horizon West community, to come and enjoy the property. Next slide, please. Given the size of our community, we've developed six neighborhoods to emphasize a sense of identity and belonging. Each neighborhood has features that promote integration between residents as they travel the property and they experience different venues. There are two primary roadways in the cardinal directions, and a series of sidewalks, passways for pedestrians, bicycles, and scooters that will connect to the broader community outside of the property. Additionally, there are two amenity buildings, mail-and-package pavilions, a covered picnic area as well. As transportation is important in this area, we've, we're gonna provide a multimodal hub in the center of the property. This will have, provide vehicles on demand, ride-sharing, charging stations, and hopefully lessen the transit impact on the broader community. Next slide, please. Our strategy towards health and wellness starts with a connection to nature on multiple levels, from pocket parks to learning playgrounds and larger green spaces for socialization. Throughout the site planning process, the layout and orientation of the built environment was secondary to maintaining the natural landscape, including the preservation of large oak trees. Collectively, we have created parks, green spaces, and a variety of sizes and scales for residents and visitors alike. Next slide, please. Here you see a series of pocket parks and interstitial spaces that are woven into the neighborhood for some peaceful time to yourself or intimate small gatherings. Next slide, please. These are the medium-sized areas for group activities, engagement, that are immersed within the natural surroundings and promote socialization. Next slide. Our largest area is the Central Green, which runs north to south at the core of the property. The green spaces host large, community-wide events such as festivals, food trucks, farmers' markets, art walks, art crouch-hoes, and performances. Next slide, please. At the core of the green is a flexible destination space for all to come together and celebrate the dynamic and engaging nature of the Horizon West community. Next slide, please. The residential buildings have a diverse collection of typologies that coincide with the characteristics of its distinct neighborhoods. The architectural style is distinctly Florida through the color palette and building forms, and again, aligning with the Horizon West design guidelines and standards. The type of rental apartments also vary, ranging from junior one-bedrooms up to four-bedroom units, with a mixture of apartments, flats, and townhome-style layouts. The unit type is based, um, next slide, please. The unit type is based on a mix of our analysis of the market and a projected household sizes and the need of affordable housing within the broader community. The majority of our units will be one- and two-bedroom apartments. These will start in today's dollars in the upper $800 range for a one-bedroom apartment, at least to someone making 50% of that average median income. Next slide, please. By providing engaging spaces and locally-inspired events and programs, our amenity centers become the heart and soul of our communities. Our management team strives to create social environments for residents to grow, learn, and connect with one another. Within this community, we have located two amenity buildings at the north and south of the property. They're placed within this, between the Central Green to create a synergy that promotes social engagements, chance encounters, and a sense of belonging. While both have unique offerings, our personal approach to management and operations ensures an elevated sense of resident experience regardless of the location. Next slide, please. This is the south amenity building. It's nestled in the southern edge of the property with a strong connection to the natural environment. Around the perimeter, there'll be dog parks, a community garden, and other outdoor patios adjacent to the wetlands. A building, this building will host our central leasing office and will serve as social gathering spaces and wellness-focused areas. This is our first impression for prospective residents to understand what it's like to be a part of this diverse community, and somewhere where residents will return frequently to congregate, celebrate, explore, and socialize with one another. Next slide, please. The north amenity building is a dynamic, energetic center, providing residents with a variety of facilities and activities focused on health and wellness. Anchored around a centralized social hub, the building offers expansive fitness centers along with social activities, areas, and spaces. Outside, the pool is the central outdoor patio, lined with a variety of gathering areas and designated lawns for relaxation, yoga, or outdoor games. This is a series of highly-active spaces that will be the epicenter for residents to motivate, relax, and connect with one another. Next slide, please. Thank you with that, and we would like to reclaim any remaining time for closing remarks.
Okay, thank you. I now open the public section of this hearing for public comments. Jason, have we received any speaker cards?
Yes, we have approximately eight speaker cards.
Okay.
The first speaker is gonna be Alexander Cabrera. Following Alexander will be Will Cooper.
Can you please provide your name and your address, sir?
Yes, sir. My name is Alexander Cabrera. I live at 13370 Pontoon Road, Winter Garden, Florida, just across from the property. My family and I, we've been residents for almost a year now, and we moved here with, after exhaustive research and knowing full well that Disney would be our neighbors. We just never thought they would be bad neighbors. Our family, as well as the, many families that we've spoken with, are in complete opposition to this. The information that, for this zoning change, it was very vague, basically, what came into us. And we understood that it was gonna be 14, well, 1,440 units coming in. Understand, units are apartments, and that is a lot of density coming in at one time. They're essentially trying to pack an enormous amount of density into what is essentially the size of a Costco parking lot. You know, it's just way too much. There's no way we can, we can fit that much. I'm not trying to go through church traffic, but to understand that the land cannot support that. It's just, their renderings and elevations are nice, and that's sweet, but that's just artistic interpretation. That could change at any time. They'll paint, they'll paint a pretty picture, but it's not what's actually coming in. The, what we'll actually have to face will be a lot worse. It will be a disaster for the area. They're essentially trying to figure out, well, if we look at what they've done in the past as far as, like, when they go crossings, their solutions for large-population housing, essentially just boxes on top of boxes stacked in an urban style. This is urban city solutions into essentially what is a suburban residential area. It's incompatible. It's just, it's not something you can reconcile. Horizon West was organized over many years, over a lot of time, and this seems very haphazard, seems very forced. The burden will be heavily on our families, and I don't think they're taking much thought into it. So I, I hope that this doesn't come into, into Horizon West. It'll be a serious burden for us, for our families, for, for those to come. This really, because the solution that they can have to come up with is more of a, more of an urban solution, it's just more of a variance what they're looking for, and it just, it's not compatible. Understand, this is a belt that cannot be unrung. We have to live with this. If you allow this in, then it's not something that stops. So please, don't force us to live with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Will Cooper, followed by Ned Williams.
Hello, I'm Will Cooper. I live at 4205 Winter Lakes Drive, Orlando, Florida, 32835. Good morning, Commissioner. As an Orange County resident and advocate, working with people experiencing poverty and homelessness in Central Florida, it is my belief we need all the affordable housing we can get. Having worked in the social services space for a while, I've heard many reasons people don't want affordable housing built near them: property values, crime. But if we look at available data, I think we can see the case for more housing, not less. Affordable housing developments with the Low Income Housing Tax Credit, the largest affordable housing financing program in the United States, has been associated with an immediate positive increase of 3.8% in property value. Another study found that LIHTech developments, on average, revitalize low-income neighborhoods, increasing housing prices by 6.5%, lowering crime rates, and attract, attracting racially and income-diverse populations. Then there's the affordability crisis of it all. According to the latest data from the National Association of Home Builders and Wells Fargo Housing Opportunity Index, just 38.1% of new and existing homes sold between October 2022 and December 2022 were affordable to families earning the US median income of $90,000. This is the lowest affordability measure of this index in the, in the, in the post-Great Recession period. Many US households can't afford to buy the homes we are building in the suburbs on larger lots. In summary, I am for more affordable housing development, and our available data shows that affordable housing developments are an asset to their surrounding communities. I urge this commission to vote in favor for more affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Ned Williams, followed, oh, you already, okay. Marcos, Marcos, last name starts with an A.
My name is Marcos Arauzro, 10135 Boswick Alley, Winter Garden. I'm here to speak for the over, I would actually say 150 families that actually participated in the community meeting, in which all the residents were against this project. As a community, we are saying a resounding no to any attempt to add more apartments to the area, whether it be luxury apartments or affordable. We currently have almost 2,500 units that are built or in the process of being built in the area where the project is, is about to be built. And that is in addition to Phase 5 of Waterly and the build-out for Stony Brook and other smaller pocket neighborhoods that are being built in the area. With the current population levels, there is already horrible traffic jams going in and out of the Publix Plaza and the Waterly community. Very, very tiny roads, you know, going in and out, as you can see that, you know, the band going into the community. Any residents trying to go on Seidel to turn into Reims Road or Summer Lake in the morning during rush hour, they're stuck there forever. I myself, trying to head south to 192, I spent almost 30 minutes trying to turn right or left on 192. Horizon West was planned for walking and biking to town centers, to schools. This is not gonna be feasible for the residents of these apartments, and that, it'd actually pose a risk for kids trying to get across into the, into the town center, especially with increased traffic along Avalon. On another note, I would like to remind the board that, you know, research actually points that high-density areas actually attract more crime and slows down police and the first responder's response. A quick Google search will show that an alarming number of shootings, sexual assaults, and burglaries actually happen in Metro West area, a community, much like Horizon West. And I would also like to inquire to the board how we are trying to vote on this item, when many of the items under the, under the review board have actually been denied, including the traffic and other, you know, mobility studies for the area. You know, issues that we brought up in the community meeting, which, you know, the applicants were not... You know, issues that we brought up in the community meeting, which, you know, the applicants were not ready for, many, many questions were unanswered, and they never followed with a second meeting to actually, you know, get the community involved in that decision. I'd like to make clear to the board that the community is welcoming affordable and attainable housing, but in the form of single-family and townhomes in the area. That way, you know, people will actually purchase the house, they will build roots in the community, and they will be there. They are going to be invested into the community instead of, you know, renting for a couple of months or years, and then moving on to other places. People who generally are not going to be as much taken care of or participating in the community itself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jack Vaneus, followed by Kelly, last name starts with a V.
Good morning, my name is Jack Vaneus. I live in nine two three eight Grand Island Way in Winter Garden, which is the budding community directly on the other side of four twenty-nine from this development. I am here today as a private resident with my personal concerns for my wife and my family. However, I am also on the Board of Directors for the Watermark Community, and in that capacity, I talk to many residents. And we talk about many things, and this item here for discussion today is one of them. And it is unanimous with the people I talk to, that we do not need fourteen hundred units, three to four people per unit. We're talking an increase in population between three and five thousand. Who knows how many? Who knows how many are going to bring cars? We currently have major traffic problems during certain times of the day that didn't exist when I moved to this area several years ago. If you insist on approving this and letting this move forward and permitting it and building it, I ask, one, that you wait. Wait for traffic to catch up. I see a lot of roads getting widened, a few traffic lights going up, and every project I've seen in our area seems to be reactive, not proactive. For this type of increase in population, let's get ahead of the game. Build the infrastructure, then let the people in, then zone it, then permit it, and force, force the hand to get ahead, not play catch-up. Another problem that everybody sees that with this, with a low-income housing, and any increase in population, is a security issue. Unfortunately, as politically correct, incorrect as it is, it brings a certain element of problems. How are we going to prevent these problems? As a resident, I don't want them there. I don't know anybody that wants those problems in their neighborhood. Now granted, the majority of the people, ninety-nine-plus percent are probably going to be good, hard-working, down-to-earth, salt-of-the-earth people. It's that other half a percent that can create the problems. How are those problems going to be addressed? Are we going to increase the budget and the staffing of the Sheriff's Department? Since this is a Disney project, are we going to have Disney Security running the place? Are we going to have Disney create their own mini-police department running the place? These are issues that need to be decided, addressed, and hopefully decided in the good of the residents already in the area, will be denied and delayed. I don't deny anybody a good place to live, but not in our community, giving our current situation an infrastructure. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Following Kelly is Kim Herndon.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Kelly Van Arstall, address, Florida. In nineteen ninety-five, when the Horizon West study was conducted and adopted, it was all about a community concerned with growth management, long-range planning, and environmental protection to shape tomorrow's community and quality of life. I want everyone to keep this criteria in mind as this topic is discussed today. What this Hartsog Road attainable housing land use map amendment is requesting specifically goes against each and every one of those values that Horizon West was built on. Over the past several years, the commission has approved countless changes, increasing the density in Horizon West, and more specifically, Village H. Enough is enough. This one thousand four hundred and ten unit complex absolutely does not fit the land use compatibility, does not belong in Horizon West, and needs to be stopped. I just want to note, I am all for attainable housing, I understand the need for it. It's, again, it's all about the density in this area. With four existing and in-construction apartment complexes in the immediate area of this location, the increased density and change to the community can be felt with each opening. These four complexes combined are approximately the same amount of units as this one that's being proposed. I want to let that sink in. This absolutely adds no value to the community of Horizon West. Approving this request will have a negative impact to surrounding properties and will decrease quality of life for residents. In a skewed traffic study conducted a while back, while school was not in session, it found there would be an increase of nine thousand three hundred and seventy daily trips. While we know this is an extremely low estimation, it is still a massive number. It is noteworthy to mention the inaccuracy of the study with school not being in session, since there are four schools within this area, and it was prior to the town center being opened with Publix Waterly. It's also important to add that this is the closest grocery store to the college program housing in Flamingo Crossing, where there's housing for ten thousand students. So, the impact of traffic with this new town center open is definitely an important factor. Aside from this, the massive school overcrowding issues, there's also an increased concern for pedestrian safety. I myself have witnessed a few near misses right in this general area. If that's not enough, one lane of Avalon southbound caved in back in December, partially swallowing a vehicle. Volume perhaps? As you can see, the list goes on and on. When speaking of compatibility with the surrounding area, this request is not consistent with the densities and intensities as outlined in the comprehensive plan per the Orange County municipal code. The density is far from a comparable living area and/or lot widths, nor does it enhance open space or conservation areas. In closing, we are asking you to make the decision that you know is right, to think about what Horizon West was designed to be, and all the thousands of current residents who spent hard-earned money to purchase homes here for that reason. We are saying that you would have, or we are sure that you would have the same concerns if this was the community that you reside in. We're asking that you use logic and common sense and not be influenced by the fact that Disney is donating the land. In all actuality, Disney owns forty-three square miles just within the Walt Disney World Resort, and I'm quite sure if they are passionate about this housing, they have the means and the resources to put it in an alternate location where there is lower density and it makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last speaker that I have is Kim Herndon.
Kim Herndon, one six seven three zero Harper Cove Drive, Winter Garden. Thank you, Chairman and Commission, for your time today. My family is against the proposed zoning change to accommodate Disney and the Michael's Organization Affordable Housing Project. Disney property wasn't included in the Horizon West plans, and it shouldn't be amended to include now. Pursuant to Orange County Code, Section thirty dash thirty-six Comprehensive Plan, it does not meet the criteria set forth. This is not a harmonious development of the area, given its massive size. It's not consistent with the neighboring five apartment complexes, as it will be four hundred and seventy percent larger. It does not best promote public safety with its additional burden to our roads, cell service, and police and fire resources. It is not in accordance with the future needs of our students, as it will further overcrowd the schools. According to Principal Hendricks of Water Spring Elementary, as of two days ago, the school has twenty-seven portables on campus. Further, my son's fifth-grade class meets in the media center due to limited space. The school's currently at a hundred and seventy-one percent capacity, an overage of five hundred and fourteen students. Based on the Orange County Public Schools, using the Tindell-Oliver Study, the multifamily complex is generate point two eight six students per unit, which means four hundred and three additional students can be expected from the proposed development. If forty-seven percent were slated for elementary, that's an additional one hundred and eighty-six students on top of the current overage totaling seven hundred students, and the new relief school is expected to have capacity of only eight hundred and thirty-seven. The seven hundred does not account for the three unfinished apartment complexes, the remainder of Waterly being built, or the MI homes at Ovation. The new elementary school will be maxed out before all housing in the immediate area is completed. We have one grocery store, zero other retailers, zero restaurants, zero gas stations, zero community parks, zero anything else to support the thousands of residents. There are much better land uses to serve our area and create permanent jobs, not temporary ones constructions bring. The cell service is absolutely atrocious. We had a power outage the other day and couldn't have called nine-one-one if we needed to. Lastly, for the applicant, if this project is truly about contributing to the affordable housing problem, then why not build on your property in Flamingo Crossings or down one ninety-two, where public transportation is available? Your contribution to an underserved community is a significant burden to ours. In summary, I am not against affordable housing in the right area, but we sought out Horizon West, which, for, because it was thoughtfully planned villages, and a project of this scope not only opens other parts of Horizon West, but Orange County, to other organizations trying to amend land use without concern for the existing community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is anyone in the public who did not fill out a speaker card would like to address this board at this time? I now close the public section of the hearing and bring it back to the board for any comments, questions, or concerns. I am for affordable housing myself. I mean, obviously, I think we all are on this board here. We've had many people who've had a chance to, you know, to get some applications for affordable housing, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Excuse me, if I could beg your indulgence. We did request to be able to make some closing statements with the couple of minutes we had remaining in our presentation, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, can you just formally reopen the public hearing portion?
Okay. I now reopen the public hearing again for any comments or concerns. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. We're just really pleased to be able to bring this item forward and talk about the critical need and how we at Disney are looking to answer that call. This is a new model for affordable housing, one that does not rely on public subsidies, and we look forward to contributing to filling this need. So, we ask for your vote to recommend to the BCC transmit our application. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. I now close the public section of the hearing and bring it back to the board for any comments and questions. As I was saying, I mean, I do like the fact that many or any development that brings affordable housing to Orange County, it's definitely a plus. However, I do hear also the concerns of the community in regards to the location and what brings to the community, you know, as a whole. Because the residents are the ones who are going to live with the benefits and the problems that development, you know, brings along. That's a, that's a fact. And the community's concerns and voices need to also be understood, and we also need to pay attention to that as well, so. With that, I will open it for my fellow commissioners to have any comments or questions. Mr. Spears?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, let me just say, I think it's very important that, that we promote attainable housing. I don't know if affordable is really the right word. I think that has a very specific definition, but housing that's attainable for people that are in our workforce. And that being said, it seems to me that Disney employees are a prime part of your potential market, that I would expect that there would be a lot of Disney employees. One of the problems with affordable housing or attainable housing in the suburban areas is transportation. I, I think that it's a mistake to consider rent alone to be the defining factor of what is attainable. Transportation costs are also a very important part of the equation. If you have access to public transportation, then you can have higher rents and still make ends meet. But if your rents are lower, but you have to maintain a private automobile, then that sort of defeats the purpose of locating the attainable housing. I'm not sure that that's the case here. I do not believe that Avalon Road is well-served by public transportation. However, I do know that Hartsog Road goes right down to, if you follow it to the south, it goes to Flamingo Crossings, which is also the same road as the Westgate, onto the Disney property. So, there is a, there is a relatively short way to go there, and so I would ask, and this also seems like, this is, this has been a property that's, that's had a, it's had a status, it's had a sort of an uncertain status. It was proposed to be served by the, the Reedy Creek Improvement District Utilities, and now that the state of Florida has taken over that as the Central Florida Tourism Oversight District, they want to get rid of this and pass it along to OUC. Whether or not OUC, now I think OUC has said that they have the capacity, but who's going to pay for this? Is this going to take up capacity of OUC that could otherwise be used for housing or even attainable housing elsewhere in, in Orange County? So, these are questions that weren't answered by the staff report. Also, regarding Hartsog Road and access to the Disney property, does Disney have any plans to provide shuttle service for their employees that may be working here? That seems like, like a great kind of service that would make the attainable housing actually more functional for employees. Another thing that I've noticed is that many times the residents and Horizon West have, have spoken out that they want neighborhood commerce to happen, and, but they don't want to have high density. And these things just go together. High density and neighborhood commerce go together. Low density and neighborhood commerce do not go together. So, if you want to have neighborhood commerce, you're going to have to, you're going to have to accept a higher density. Since the, since the Village Center is directly across Avalon Road from this property, this seems to me like a very logical place to put a higher density, because it's going to promote more neighborhood commerce within the Village Center, which is where it's supposed to go. So, my other question is regarding, it looks like there's a series of rapid infiltration basins that takes up approximately half the uplands on the site. And my question is, what do they do? Is this part of OUC, or is it a part of Conserve Two, which is in this general vicinity? Is the applicant proposing to continue to have rapid infiltration basins on the property, perhaps in underground vaults, or are they going to just get rid of those? I also noticed that you didn't really have a whole lot of retention ponds shown on your very slick renderings. But they obviously have to be a part of this. You know, perhaps there's potential of including the rapid, or replacing the function of the rapid infiltration basins in, in the stormwater management system. Perhaps the stormwater management system is going underground. I really only saw that you had two ponds shown that were down near the wetland, and that's obviously not going to be sufficient to, to serve this. And then, and then the other one was regarding the protected species. I noticed that there was a lot of information about the protected species in here. I'm familiar with this area, and given the elevation, the types of soils, I would expect there to be sand skink on the property. It seems from the staff report like this was addressed through Disney's overall management of the sand skink within the Reedy Creek Improvement District, or as it's now called, the Central Florida Tourism Oversight District. But that's, and it, and it seems that, that the habitat that's designated for this has been reduced from eighty-six point eight to forty-six point one. And so, my question is, has there been any coverboard studies done on? And so my question is, has there been any coverboard studies done on this property to narrow down the, the, the actual population on this? And so that's a, that's a few items that are related to this, but overall, I think that this is a project that can be accommodated in, in the area in Horizon West. Obviously, you've got some, some things to work out. Another thing is, I saw a lot of residential on this. This is going to be a PD. If, if it's actually going to be affordable or attainable housing, you're going to need some neighborhood commerce with this many residents. They're going to want to have a corner store, maybe a cafe, some stuff like this. You don't specifically have it shown as being any part of the, the Village, the Village Center, but some measure of, of commerce within your development, I think, is merited. So, so that's a lot of considerations, but overall, I support this. So I was wondering if the applicant could address any of the items that, that I brought up.
It was a lot of them. We are, we're, it's your last one first. We are considering location. We, we recognize too that some local commerce would be good, and those are some things that we're still looking at and considering. Is, for some of your, your, just for the stormwater and those things, would either Danny or, Danny, you want to talk to that? Or Kathleen?
Kathy Hathaway, for the record. Commissioner Spears, we'll just go through a few of your questions. There may be a couple of us that need to answer them. So you, you mentioned utilities. Yes, I, I think the staff report provides the information that, that Orange County Utilities has capacity and the process is in, in place.
I think it said OUC, didn't it, in the staff report?
Oh, it's Orange County Utilities.
The Orange County Utilities.
Yes, would provide water, wastewater and reclaim, then have stated that capacity is available for this community. With regard to the rib site, it is no longer in use and will be decommissioned before the construction begins on the property.
Okay, so that was part of the CONSERV II, and it's been removed from that facility?
It was, and within the Reedy Creek Improvement District system.
Oh, that was a Reedy Creek's internal ribs. Okay.
Yes. Retention ponds, obviously, we're not at final site plan.
Yeah.
That will be accommodated. You mentioned the, some neighborhood commercial on the property. We had quite a bit of conversation about that with staff, and just going back to the founding principles of Horizon West with the location of the Village Center and having the commercial components of the villages kind of in a central location and not spread out through the community. It was, you know, staff's position was that the neighborhood, that this community and the residents will be served by the commercial in the Village Center. I am going to ask Danny Goff with Biotech to address the, your sand skink question.
And then there was also the transportation issue about whether Walt Disney World or was going to be providing any sort of private transportation from the housing to their, to the workplaces in the Magic Kingdom or?
Okay. Thank you for that reminder. So after Danny speaks, then someone else will come up and address your question on transportation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Daniel Goff, Biotech Consulting, three zero two five East South Street, Orlando, three two eight oh three. We did do a sand skink coverboard survey during the 2023 window. We did not find any sand skinks, and we can provide that report with pictures and, you know, the survey methodology to staff and to the county. So the only listed species we found are goph tortoises, and those will be relocated to the Disney Mar-a-Lago Special Recipient Site.
Yeah, I looked, I looked from the map, like a lot of those tortoises were in the burms of the ribs.
Yeah, they're in the ribs because they're no longer in use, and there are some in the pine plantation on the west side.
Okay.
So, and I'll pass it on to Mohammed for any traffic.
Okay.
Thank you, Danny. Thank you. Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. Mohammed Abdullah, Traffic and Mobility Consultants, thirty-one oh one McGuire Boulevard, Suite two six five, Orlando. Commissioner, your, your question on transportation, and we were conferring back there, with, with regards to direct shuttle service, again, this is a affordable housing, community open for all. We do anticipate, obviously, that there will be an attraction for Disney cast members to be there, but it's not restricted to them. So that is under evaluation, whether the concentration of Disney cast members in this community would warrant direct shuttle service. But having said that, the situ, the, where the site is situated is, it, it's well situated to be within reach of the Disney property. As you, as you mentioned, it's about a, about a two-mile distance down Hartsaw Road to get to Western Way, and from there, you know, that's the node that takes you into, into Disney. So from transportation and being close to jobs, obviously, the site is as close to those jobs without being on top of them. So, so we feel, again, the location, the situation of where the property is definitely lends to it being desirable for those movements. Again, that'll continue to be discussed and, and reviewed, and if the, the concentration is warranted, then, then that's a, that's a different conversation. As far as, you know, any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Obviously, that's one of the major concerns that the community have. With the amount of residents coming in, the amount of vehicles impacting the area, it's definitely going to, going to, going to affect it in a negative way. So as far as the, I know it has, the, the community has planned for three entrances, correct? Three points?
That's correct.
Are you planning to expand the roads in any direction or the entrances to make it easier for, for that to be, the impact to be less of a, of a problem?
Excellent question, Mr. Chair. Yeah, the, the, the access points will be evaluated. Any kind of improvements that are needed, like turn lanes and expanding the roadway right there at the access point to make the access points functional, will, will, will have to be done. I mean, that's a, that's a permitting requirement of Orange County. There are still many steps of review with staff to make sure that those things happen. As far as overall, the plan for Horizon West, the original plan for Horizon West included a, you know, quite dense development, and, and a lot of it has come to fruition, some of it has not. So the transportation plan for the area, as it continues to develop and as it continues to mature, is definitely planned for this type of density. It's not, this is not a, you know, an above and beyond type of development when it comes to the transportation network. Obviously, today, it's still maturing, it's still growing, and this project won't, probably won't have a car on the road for another, you know, two, three years, maybe, by the time it gets built out. So there is time here still. I had to catch up with some of the local improvements that are happening on Avalon.
Is, is there a way, I mean, obviously, I don't think that would be for you, but for county, do we have any county transportation representatives here to, to talk about addressing or expanding the roads? Because obviously, it's coming, and we need to be proactive, as it was addressed by one of the residents, which it makes sense. Instead of being reactive, you know, let's be proactive. And I want to hear from any of the transportation, from the county, to see what plans we have currently that before this, this plan, and many other projects in Horizon West. I mean, obviously, I think twenty-five hundred units are being developed as we speak in that area, and adding fourteen hundred more, it's definitely a, a big impact, regardless how you, you know, how you put it. So we need to be reactive instead of proactive. I mean, I'm sorry, we need to be proactive instead of reactive because it's coming. So that's a major concern. Is there any?
Mr. Chairman, there's, there's no one here from Transportation Division to speak on the matter, but I can point you to page twelve at the bottom, where it talks about Avalon Road. Avalon Road currently is four lanes. It turns into two lanes pretty much right where the subject property is located. Avalon Road is planned to be four lanes all the way down to State Road, US one ninety-two, but there's no funding for it. It's at various stages with studies and such, but there's no construction date yet set for that. So currently, it is within the twenty forty timeline, but that could change once, if, if it's moved up in the funding system.
Sure. There's, there seems to be, and I'm very familiar with this area, it's in my district, but it seems to be traffic everywhere. I mean, on almost every roadway in all Horizons West. So, you know, I always feel like if traffic studies were correct, we, why do we have traffic? But, you know, how is, I mean, it's showing that everything's functioning currently as designed, yet there's traffic. So what is the baseline? Is it like a thirty-minute wait to go a mile? Like, like what is the baseline? Because I, I've seen, you know, in the, in the last year, I've seen a lot of apartment projects in Horizons West, and in fact, that's all we ever see these days. And it seems that the traffic is just getting tremendously worse out there. And it seems that everything always shows on a study that it, it is functioning as it should, that it will fail and, and, you know, I think in your report, it shows that it'll have failed segments in twenty, you know, fifteen years from now. But what about the segments now, currently, that are causing just all the residents out there so many issues? And, and the, the impact that this one would do would be tremendous. Six hundred and forty-four additional trips, I believe the, the study showed, at the PM hours. That's, that's significant for that roadway. And if, if I, if, if I'm, you know, if I'm right here, but isn't it developer-driven too, the, the roadway improvements? Isn't it a, a partnership with the developers?
Well, they'll, they'll have to pay the impact fees and, and enter into agreements for, for monies, but, and then to, to, to provide for their impact to the roadways.
So just in their segment, wherever their segment is? Okay. Yeah, I, I just, I just feel that this would be, you know, extremely detrimental. I think it's been gaslighted as a Disney employee project out there quite a lot, but it's, it's really not. And, and if it were strictly a Disney employee project and Disney provided transportation to their employees, I, I think it would be a little bit different. However, this is open to, to anybody. Disney says they're not going to profit, yet they are holding a land lease on the, on the developer. So it, it's, you know, I feel there's a lot of, a lot of questions. And was this presented to the community at the community meeting, the, these studies, that presentation, or any of that? Were you at the community meeting?
So I was not at the community meeting, and someone will come up and answer that question. But to answer your previous questions, Commissioner, on, you know, the network, how it works, this project and its impacts, you're absolutely right. As, as a driver, I'd like to answer your question. The baseline is, if I can get from here to there as fast as I want to, that should be the baseline. But as a taxpayer and a professional, the baseline is to use the roadways to the maximum of their capacity for, you know, to, to return the investment to the taxpayer on the infrastructure we're building. So roadways, as you know, are costing anywhere between twenty and twenty-five million dollars a mile to build these days, and we don't build those so that we can do sixty miles an hour on the road. The baseline is to be able to propagate traffic and move people and goods in a efficient manner on the transportation network. In rush hour, it's busy. It's designed to be busy, but that doesn't mean it's a breakdown of the system. As far as the project here, yes, it, it will obviously generate traffic. The studies that you see look at the worst-case scenario. So we didn't account for any potential future transit, any potential future capture of people walking from this property to commerce adjacent or commerce nearby. So the worst-case scenario is the number you quoted, the six hundred trips in the peak hour. But those also, we should be reminded, don't go on one road and don't go in one direction. So in the system, there's, there is capacity to handle this traffic. And yes, that doesn't mean you get to go at five o'clock, fifty miles an hour down Avalon. It does mean that you will be able to move down Avalon in a safe and efficient manner. As far as the community meeting?
Well, I want to, before that, I want to ask you a question. Based on the report that we have here, it says road agreements. There are currently no road agreements associated with the subject property. This is fourteen hundred units that have been, fourteen hundred and something, right? So what would require, based on your knowledge, an agreement between the builder and the city to, to expand and work on the roadway, on the, you know, in order to facilitate the movement of traffic?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner. Yeah, that's, as, as part of this development process, today, we're at transmittal. So you're recommending transmittal or not recommending, hopefully, you are recommending transmittal. There is a process that we still have to go through. There's quite a bit of work that we have to do with staff to get to adoption, to get to zoning, to get to permitting. So along that process, one of the, one of the items that is required for this property is a road agreement. So the road agreement, what, what it will do is it will test the impact of the development, not just on the adjacent roads, but within the area, wherever it sends significant, significant amounts of traffic to. And then the applicant will be required to offset, you know, as, as Jason mentioned, to offset in terms of funding and advancing projects with the county to offset its impacts.
Okay.
Okay. But that is not today. That will happen, should we be transmitted today.
Mr. Chair, I, I apologize. May I respectfully make a request to make some brief remarks? I, I had emailed Ms. Terry that I, I have to leave for a medical appointment, if I may.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just some brief remarks, given the need for my, my departure. I, I want to thank all of the residents who came out today. I know, I'm certain most of you work, and I, I think it takes a big effort to be here. So thank you, thank you for your remarks. And, and we, please know, we, we take those seriously and, and file, and value them. Having read the, the staff report and, and based on the information presented, so far in this case, I unfortunately won't be here for, for the remaining comments. It seems to me, one of the criteria that I always take into account in my votes, particularly in Orange County and in Horizon West, is the concept of, of infill. And this project very much checks that box for me when it comes to infill. From an attainable housing perspective, this, this project also seems to, to have merit from, from that perspective. From a compatibility standpoint to the surrounding areas, when I look, when I looked to the, the PD to the north in particular, I think there is a, there is compatibility for this project. When I take into concern, into account the environmental issues, I see the, the obvious preservation of the wetland on the south of the subject property. So for, for those reasons, I unfortunately won't be able to vote, but I would recommend transmittal. Were I here to vote, I wanted to, to share that, at least on the information presented to this point. And I wanted to share that with both the public and my fellow commissioners. I, I encourage transmittal of this project. So with that, I, I thank you for your exception, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pawan?
Just want to do some general remarks, and just to remind the public and everyone else that this is a fact checking commission. And the county overall has a, has a trend, has a plan, right? And this proposal from Disney and the developer- And this proposal from Disney and the developers, from, from a lot of angles, do meet that criteria. Now, as a former resident over Horizon West and the Hamlin area, I understand your frustration. You know, my kid went to two different schools, and he's not out of elementary at some point, right? But I also going to take along with Mr. Commissioner Spears' comments, if we want development, it comes along with density. If we want the restaurants that we got out there, everybody here knows probably that it takes an hour on Friday or more to get a table. And that's just part of what it comes out to this kind of development. That means a criteria also in affordable housing because it's very needed in the county and in central Florida. So with that, you know, I, I'd like to also say that I support transmittal for this project.
All right, thank you. Mr. Arrington?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to voice my, my comment on this as well. Of course, I'm a huge proponent of, you know, affordable housing. And what does that mean? We're seeing now the median, the median average earner in, in this community still can't afford, you know, you know, rent's going up every year, you know, and everything. And it's, it's creating more of a, a community issue. It's not just a Horizons West issue. It's not just a Hamlin issue. It's not a West Orange issue. It's a whole devastating impact on all of us. And we need, and another one of my components is good development. Good development incorporates some aspect of affordability. Add to the fact that Walt Disney is involved with this, and they have a high expectation. I'm sure Michaels and Walt Disney World, I would assume, I would hope that those same high expectations Walt Disney World looks for in their contractors, developers, overall end product is going to reflect in this development as well. I've heard a lot of the concerns from the community and, and some of the oppositions. And some of the things that I've heard were school overcrowding, okay? Crime rate, impact on density to the surrounding area, traffic and quality of life. Those are typical concerns residents have. And, you know, and I could speak to each one of these. I mean, no community is, is avoid from any of these concerns. And I have to agree with my other commissioners as well. You know, if you want development, it comes with commerce. They both go hand in hand. I think from what we saw conceptually, we see a good development. It's incorporating green space, it's incorporating engagement within, within the village, it's incorporating connectivity. And, you know, the affordability aspect is not for just, you know, low-income people. It's for median income people too, your average workers such as myself, you know, nurses and teachers and, you know, you know, base, you know, these, these, these type of careers and jobs is what makes our community thrive. And I see more benefit to this development than opposition, in my opinion. So I would, you know, one of the questions and concerns, you know, you know, again, making it sustainable, making it to where we lessen the burden, you know, if we've got, you know, retail shops or restaurants within this village, you know, the transportation component, you know, there are going to be studies done, there are going to be things that have to happen, you know, once, once this, you know, goes, this voted to move forward, there's going to be other conversations to make this development, you know, right for the, for that area. So with that, you know, I, I love the fact that this is all based on affordability. I think it's very much needed. I think it's a good develop, project, well-planned and thought-out. And I, I do look forward to seeing this, you know, project go forward.
Okay, Ms. Evans?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for everyone who has attended. I think it's incredibly important for us to hear from the entirety of our community on issues that face our future, that help address our future. You know, I am one of those people who are not born and raised in Orlando, Florida. I moved to Orlando in 2005 and made it my home. So like many people in this room and in our community, there are many people who move here. And we know that Horizons West is one of the fastest-growing zip codes in the country, not just in the area. And so I, I share the shock that many of us have when our good idea is agreed to by other people, and then all of a sudden, there's a lot of us here. And so when we see the effects of growth in our communities, it can be quite uncomfortable at times. And I remind everybody that you were somebody else's uncomfortable addition at some point as well. Having said that, I think that is important also for us to be mindful that, you know, we talk about affordable housing and attainable housing, and people say, oh, no, not multifamily units, oh, not apartments. Make it single-family homes, make it townhomes. Can you afford those? Have you looked at the pricing on that? People can't afford that. In this day and age, it's not just that affordable housing is associated with people who are low-income and therefore crime-ridden. It is, affordability is an issue that's affecting everyone, everyone. You don't have to look disheveled or look unkempt to be subject to affordable housing, be part of the affordable housing crisis. It's an issue that everybody here faces. I live in the Metro West community. I love it there, and I think it's great because there is a mix of incomes in the community, and it adds to the diversity and the character of our community. I think that what I'm excited about in this Horizons West area is that you see a lot of people who have agreed that central Florida has a lot to offer. And it's one of the few areas where we actually have space to put people. Now, is 1,400 units a lot? Yes. Are those other units out there already a lot? Yes. And I don't disagree with you that at times it can feel like a lot, especially when you have growth that happens at a rate that doesn't necessarily match the development of infrastructure. And that's something that we as a county and as a regional planning authority, you know, regional planning group of entities have to continue to be on the forefront. I practice in the area of public finance and help governments across the country deal with their funding of infrastructure to meet what people think their community should look like. And it's not a problem you fix overnight. But at the same time, you can't just stop development and pretend like people have a place to live. I heard comments that this may be only available to Disney residents. I just wanted to confirm, I mean, Disney employees, I just want to confirm, this is housing that's open to everyone. That's correct. The applicants are shaking their heads, yes. And, and I think that's important. You know, I, I think one of the black eyes we've seen in our community is how we've noticed that there is a limit, well, not a limit, but not enough high-wage jobs that help make people afford more. And I think this is a great way for us to kind of help bring things together and meet people where they are. So having said those remarks, I want to say that I, I absolutely support this project. And I think that my fellow commissioner made a great point, that we are a fact-finding commission. We are based on, we are, we are subject to the assignment of reviewing consistency with, with the plan. And I think that that's what this project presents. And I don't disagree with the residents that it will be, continue to be uncomfortable while the area adjusts to the growth. But I, you know, I encourage the residents who are always already there to remind themselves that they're a part of this challenge as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wiggins?
Mr. Chairman, are we allowed to ask the audience through, by show of hands, how many are for this development and how many are opposed?
Yes, of course.
How many present today are in favor of this development? Okay, thank you. And how many are opposed? I assume most of you are residents.
How many work at Disney or as part of the lobbying group? I think that's a pretty good question to ask. I mean, if we raise those hands up high so that we know. So how many, so, so, yeah, so it's, it's Disney employees or the lobbying group.
Thank you.
Thank you. Comments that I have is, the, the first question is about the number of units. It was said there's 1,410, and the staff report says 1,450 attainable. Could, could I ask staff to put up or answer that question?
It's 1,410.
Okay, but all right. Are, are we able to put up the aerial map showing the location of the site?
Yeah, if you can go back two slides. Or go to the aerial. There it is.
Okay, look, looking at the site, I mean, you've got a huge amount of the property is wetlands or green space. And the developable acreage of that is significantly less. And based on my calculation at, and I was told that first it was 80, then 75 developable acres, that, that, that will result in 19 units per acre, which to me is an extremely dense, you know, dwelling unit per acre density out there. I've heard all the expressions about traffic. There was expression about the schools, that one of the schools already has 27 portables on site. Now, I, I'm just raising questions that, that seem obvious on, I mean, I see that the devolve was nicely done by Disney Imagineering, and it looks beautiful on paper. I, I hear all about the, the lack of commerce, the lack of restaurants, the lack, the lack of additional transportation planning in, in, in existent for a development. Could I ask the developer, over how many years would this be planned to be developed? Is this over, within the next five years, 10 years horizon? Is, is that?
Yeah, Ned Williams with, with Michaels. It's, if we were to start this fall, we're, we're planning, it won't all deliver at once. You're not just going to get suddenly 1,400 units on the site. It'll deliver and, and basically, we'll never stop construction, but there'll be units coming online while other ones are being built. That construction period is around four to five years, and the first units would come online in 2026.
I see. Thank you. And can anybody answer about the estimated time periods for improved traffic corridors to service the additional traffic? I know it was mentioned that Avalon Road will be expanded. Is that like in five years, 15 years, or, or what?
So Commissioner, in the absence of county staff being here, I, I can give you some of what I know regarding Avalon. Most of Avalon in this area is, I think as noted, developer-driven. There are currently design plans underway for the four-laning of Avalon from whatever that new, Hartsog Road actually, where Hartsog Road was relocated to, all the way to here to Waterly, where currently it trims down to, to four lanes. So those plans are underway. As far as start construction date, I don't have that, but the, the design is being done. So next step after design would be construction. And, and that's being done by, mostly by the Village Eye Development Group. Sidell Road is, is also about to be, you know, underdesigned to be completed. Reams Road is going through an RCA. So there, there is a lot in this area that is happening. As far as start of construction of each one, I don't have that unfortunately, but the transportation plan, as was planned in the, in the initial design of this, is coming online as the area continues to grow.
Thank you. So my, my thoughts are that it seems to be almost too much stuffed into this space that they plan. However, it is a very good project, and I do support affordable housing or attainable I guess with, with great hesitancy, I, I will follow my fellow commissioners to let this be, proceed to the next step, but, but very cautiously and, and would ask the, the developer and the owners to, you know, more specifically, address some of those concerns that, of residents and, and myself. Thank you.
Well, I, I would like to clarify, or I will have the builder clarify, the number of units being one bedroom, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms, can you please? Based on your, I'm curious as to what would be the, the actual sizes, size of units?
Sure. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Joe Cheval. I'm with Michaels Organization to Cooper Street, Camden, New Jersey. So we do have a diverse mix of units with, starting at junior one bedrooms, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, and four bedrooms. So to further explain that split, the majority of our units, over 80%, will be one and two-bedroom units. The balance of that would reside in the junior one bedrooms. And then, and all of those are actually just apartments, stacked apartments, which is what you traditionally see in Horizon West. We also have three and four-bedroom units that will be more of a townhome style, and they will also be classified as an apartment, but they will be, have an internal walk-up to them. So they'll be larger. So in terms of total square feet?
So you mean that, that will be two floors? Is that what?
Yes, sir. That is correct. So under Horizon West code requirements in the guidelines, a minimum unit size is 500 square feet. Our minimum unit size of a junior one bedroom is 576 square feet, as proposed currently. And then there is a range that escalates up as the units get larger. And the, the very largest unit would be around 1,900 square feet, and that would constitute a four-bedroom, three-bath unit.
So 80% of the units will be about 570 feet? Is that what you're saying?
No, sir. I would say 80% of the units would be one and two bedrooms.
Right. But what would be the size of the one bedrooms?
There would be a variety of different unit types, but they would generally like range in, around the 650 square feet, up to 900 square feet, and some over 1,000 square feet.
Hmm, okay. Ah? It's kind of, yeah, that's a, that, that's, that's, I don't know. I, I would really, my personal request to you to really consider the size of the units, especially 80% of the units that you're providing. That's the reason why it is, the density is so high. I mean, it's obviously, I, I see the calculations, but I would really would like you to reconsider to see if you could increase the size of the units. Because it also, remember, you're coming in into a community that is already there, and they already have a value, right? Their properties already have value. So if you bring a property that is much smaller than what's, it's already there, and the value of the unit, right, based on its size, is not going to be comparable to a value of a home that is already there. So it's really, I mean, the difference to me, it's, it's, it's really big. If you could make it, again, I would just like to request that. I, I'm, I'm all for this project, however. And I think most of the residents in the area of, you know, the community feel the same way, where if you bring a product, bring it, you know, kind of, you know, not the same, but not opposite to what they have. And I think a 600, again, 80% of your properties, of your units, it's going to be around 600 feet, 600 square feet compared to, and again, let me just ask to clarify that. Jason, is there a way for us to find out the average size of the surrounding area?
We, we can, we can try. I don't know if we, we can try. I just want to- And I just want to caution, this is not at that, this stage where we're really.
No, I know, but again, it's just to, to have more or less an idea.
Right. And I just want to remind us too, that, you know, this is the market's version of affordability. So you can't get affordability if you're spending more than what you're going to be getting back.
For a normal, yeah.
Right, so.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that it's, obviously the price is based on the size. So that's what it is. And then that also increases the density. So, you know, it goes, I, I'd just like to hear Mr. Boars' opinion on that.
So, so, you know, I just want to remind, there is, there is zero future land use designation to this parcel. So we are, you know, we are not here to kind of look, we are here to, to say, okay, we are now going to invite this into an overall plan that had densities already set out a long time ago. And so all the plans for roads, for schools, everything in this area was based on this parcel never having 1,410 units. So, you know, as, as a member of the District One community, the amount of emails I got was overwhelming for this. From what I understand, all the information that was presented today, zero of it was presented at a community meeting. And, and not, there was no presentation and, and it was just asked of our commissioner to regroup, come back, have another community meeting with the community and really show them what's going on. That, that was never done. You know, I, I fear that, you know, that, you know, it is, in this particular case, what, what is good development? You know, good, I think good development looks at the overall picture, the schools, the roads, and, and help Orange County to prepare themselves. But if we're going to push things down, you know, the throat all the time, we're always going to be making up for it and will never have the resources to adequately serve the communities. And, and I think this is a perfect example. You know, there is traffic on every road out there. Every school has, the second it gets built, the start of you have capacity and they're trying to get another one. It, it's, it's disheartening that our children have to go through that. You know, and, you know, I 100% back affordable housing. I 100% think that, that we need more of it, but it's the, that's such a loose, you know, loose phrase, affordable housing. What, what is affordable? I mean, you know, and, and they give up the space, they give up, you know, rooms, they give up all this to pay, it's just a percentage of square footage, you know? I mean, it's, it's, it's not for Disney employees like, like it was made out to be. Everybody's going to have their own transportation. There's no buses in this area, there's no shuttles, there's nothing. So it's just going to clog up the roads. And, and, you know, I, I know that we were supposed to look at stuff black and white, like, does this meet future land use? Does this meet this? Well, there's no future land use for it to meet right now. So in my opinion, it's up to us to say, okay, we are now going to put this many more units into something that has future land use designations all around it, you know? But, but now we're going to impact it even more on something where honestly, has anybody seen a single family home development come through here for Horizons West in the last year? It is nothing but apartments. It's overwhelming the amount of apartments out there. And there's a lot of people that bottomed Horizons West thinking it was going to be a single family home community with some apartments and some townhomes. But it is, it is just all apartments and that's the only developments coming through. And, and I, I don't see anything wrong with different types of developments, but it's just the impact it has on the local community. And, you know, I, I can't vote in favor because I don't feel the applicant has done a good job engaging with the community. I don't feel that some of these concerns that all these residents have have been looked at or, or shared. I, I just, for me, it's, 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 you know, I, I, I hope that there can be a middle ground and I do hope that there is going to be affordable housing, but, you know, I just, I feel that that is a lot of units for that little area.
The density, the density is the, is the one that.
It's just so intense. And I mean.
I mean, we are all for that, but it's just the amount of units that are being, that are being cramped in that particular space.
And I would probably have a different outlook on it if Orange County already assigned that area for that high density already so that all the studies that have been done and been prepared included that for the future studies. But, but this, this is just, this is adding that many more to a system that I feel is already flawed, so.
I mean, the transportation issue, obviously something that will be addressed in the future. I mean, it has, it will definitely be addressed and even Avalon Road is being expanded, some of the roads are being addressed. So I think as far as the transportation, I, I think that definitely will be addressed in, you know, in the future permitting. What I, what I'm a little bit concerned is the amount of units that are being developed in that area. And I think some of the residents have the same concerns and I think even Mr. Wiggins also expressed the same concerns with that. The schools being overcrowded at this point, remember that this is going to take four to five years. If, if it starts in two years from now, we're looking at eight years from now where the impact will actually be affected towards the school. So I think that that will also be addressed, you know, as far as the schools. So that's not something that I think will be a major concern, which I know will be addressed, the, the transportation and the, and the school capacity. But at the same time, I, I think the, the issue that will not be addressed is the density, the amount of density that will be developed in one particular area, I think is too much. That's my opinion. And, and that's, I think, is the reason why most of the residents are concerned about. So I think that we should give, give the opportunity to the developer to meet with it, with the residents again and let them know that their concerns will be addressed. However, if there is a way for the builder to reconsider that in some way, that should also relieve some of the concerns for the community. Because once you build it, it's there and then you have to deal with the consequences whether you want to or not, you know? And I think that's some of the concerns that we also expressed on this board today. I, I have a question for the representative for Disney. Can you tell me, or can you let us know what, why Disney is involved and what benefits do you bring to this particular community?
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much for that question. And as I shared in our presentation, Disney has been a part of this conversation in our community for quite some time and our community leaders and us have been talking about this great problem. And here was an opportunity for us to dedicate land that would be very specifically set forward for affordable housing. This community is actually going to be a mixed income community, so there will be some market rate units available as well. But our focus here and why we're dedicating the land is to ensure that affordable housing will be committed to Orange County for many, many, many years to come.
So you're just dedicating the land but nothing else, right? Is that correct? I just want to make sure.
You're not, you're not getting a payment for the land lease at all?
Correct.
So it's all free? It's just free, free lien?
Correct. Yes. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you.
So let me just ask one more question to the developer. Is there a way that you could reconsider the amount of units that you're going to build there and the size, as far as, especially the 80%? That I would just like to know, or I would like you to let the, the community know if there is a way for you to reconsider that at all?
Mr. Chairman, Ned Williams with Michaels. All I can do is we'll consider it. We'll take a look at that.
Okay, okay. But I think that, that's a great flexibility in your part and I want to thank you for that. And I think that if you meet again, which I think you should, and let the community know how flexible you are, I think that will really make it much easier for us and for the community to accept your, your development. I mean, I, I think. And if I could hear somebody, some of my fellow commissioners in regards to that, I think that would be great.
I believe they would not have, be required to meet with the community again if we push it forward, correct?
There are current plans, as far as I am aware, to do another community meeting of some kind prior to this going to the Board of County Commissioners for Transmittal.
Okay.
Can we make that meeting mandatory somehow? Can we put a set, set a date that is for, something that will, that will give our.
Yeah, because I, we feel that the community needs to also meet again with the, with the builder. Yeah, with the developer and we just want to make sure that, you know, everybody's comfortable with what's, you know, what we're doing here.
Well, the, the request, I think somebody said it wasn't clear what the request was, the community meeting or something, but it's pretty clear. It's village, future land use for 1,410 units. Unless that's going to change, you know, I don't know that, even though it is already planned to go out to the community, I mean, I, I guess it's a question to the applicant, do they, are they willing to go back out to the, commit to go back out to the community?
Before the applicant response.
Yeah.
Just would note for the board that although you cannot mandate the meeting, but if they represent to you that they are committed to one, you could take that as part of your consideration in how you vote today if there's a motion and a vote today.
Sounds good. So.
You would want them to state it on the record, of course, if that's something you want to take into consideration.
Yes, please.
And so that's a meeting before the BCC.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. Yes, absolutely. We are committed to ensuring that we will continue to communicate with the community and we're looking to do an open house before the next meeting.
Excellent. Okay. And you will address, oh, obviously, yeah, I will address the size and the amount of units at that point. Okay, then I am, Mr. Boars, I'll give you the floor.
Would you like to get the, anybody else have anything?
Hold on. Mr. Wiggins?
I had, well, I wish I had heard from Commissioner Boars first. I may have changed my mind about transmitting this, but be that as it may, I'll defer to him for the motion.
Can we go to the recommendation slide?
Based off the hundred, or 1,410 units, I recommend denial of Amendment 2023A-11.
So just to be clear, it'd be a recommendation to not transmit?
Yeah. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twice, okay. So.
Opposed, opposed would be the other.
Any opposed?
Nay.
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 Okay. Okay. So then I would like to get a second motion so that we could discuss the reasons, so.
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend transmittal of Amendment 2023-3-A-1-1.
Second.
I would, I would like to, before, before you do the second, I would like to add something to the request to make sure that we understand that the commitment from the, from the builders, it's, it's recognized that we recommend transmittal based on the fact that he, they're willing to do two things, to meet with the community and also to consider the size and the amount of units being built.
I just said a date for that meeting.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I have a motion and a second, correct?
Yeah, I was just going to say you do have a motion and a second, Mr. Chair. If you're requesting that they amend their motion, you may do so and then Ms. Evans could, could adopt what you've said as a, an amendment or not, but it'd be up to Ms. Evans as the.
I do not wish to amend my motion. I don't think that our, our approval should be conditioned on additional action.
Can I get a second on that?
There already is a second.
Right, you don't need a second on that. You would just then, unless there's more discussion, because you have a motion and a second, you could call the question.
Okay. So then, if there is no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 How many ayes?
Show of hands.
Three ayes.
Four.
Okay. So motion passes.
Sorry, did you say opposed?
Oh, any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
All right. Well, after this, after this small.
This next one should be.
Yes. So, Mr. Chairman, the next case is going to be a small scale amendment and this is going to be presented by Maria Cahill.